Okay, welcome back. We're going to go ahead and get started with our budget presentation. So Susan, thank you for being here with us and welcome.
Thank you and good evening, members of the board. Superintendent Beilefeld, my name is Susan Willis. I'm currently serving as the district's chief financial officer. Tonight begins the first in a series of budget presentations as we journey through balancing fiscal year '25. We will chat fairly regularly between now and September as we bring to you various data points regarding our financial status, some data analytics around trend data that we anticipate happening through the upcoming school year. And as we look at the board's primary responsibility of passing a balanced budget for fiscal year '25, which is required by statute. So this is part of the primary function the board serves is to adopt the budget. We will be looking at a number of things that will really impact fiscal year '25. But really, as we start tonight, I want to speak, first of all, about kind of the overall purpose of a budget, not just what is required by statute. But for any organization, not just school districts, the purpose of a budget is to provide a financial roadmap to ensure that any organization has adequate resources. And we heard a lot about the need for resources tonight in some of the presentations we've heard, allocated appropriately in order for an organization to achieve its goals. That's critical work beyond the statutory requirement of passing a budget and tracking financial expenditures. How do we achieve our goals? And again, if we even back up a step further, how are we even, how did we even get to the goals that we set, right? So as we look at some of that visioning work that the board has been really doing for the past, well, more than five years, but certainly in earnest in the past three, we can start to see the direction that that roadmap needs to take from a financial perspective. As we look at how we want public schools to go, that's how our communities will go, right? As we are looking at what do our schools need to look like today, we also need to look and vision what we want them to look like in the future, whether it's two years, five years, 10 years down the road. Decisions that we make today will impact financial, the financial security of the district on an ongoing basis. We have had a tremendous number of engagement opportunities for people, our stakeholders, our parents, our students, our staff in the past two or three years, specifically around our federal COVID relief spending, which we're calling ESAR for tonight's purposes. We've had it around the strategic plan, kind of revamp, if you will, that we, that's the work that the board did last fall. We've had it around the superintendent search, which is hard to believe was not hardly a year ago. And then we'll have it around facilities planning upcoming. And I think Superintendent Beilefeld will talk a little bit more about that in his comments tonight. We've done it through site councils and the needs assessment process that the state implemented a few years back that we use to develop budgets. And most recently, we've done it in the form of a staff budget circle process where we engaged our staff in, if, as we've talked about, the end of federal COVID relief funding, what are the emotional responses to having to reduce budgets related to that end of funding? What are the initiatives in buildings that are currently working? And what are initiatives that maybe are working, but they're not as effective as others, right? We asked them to process around those concepts. And all in an opportunity to look at where can we potentially say no in order to get to a greater yes? So this visioning work related to building a financial roadmap is, has been extremely important. And you're going to see a lot of that feedback embedded in the rest of this presentation. And I'll reference back to it over and over again that part of the recommendation process, as we bring these recommendations to the board, are ingrained and entrenched in feedback. So kind of focusing on this most recent process of the budget circle. What we did is we took the restorative practice kind of lessons we've learned and the effectiveness that we've seen with our staff and students and our staff with each other. We took that concept and we said, let's apply it to the budgeting process. And let's really try to engage our stakeholders and get the feedback, not only the, kind of the facts of what should we spend money on, but what should we not spend money on? But some of those bigger themes of, you know, how do you feel about budget reductions? And how do you feel about the process of the district walking through these decisions? And we really got some tremendous feedback through this process. 469 recorded group responses, including site councils. That's almost a 96% response rate. And we actually had 100% response rate, but not quite at the deadline point. So really, we did tremendously well. And what we did this time that's been different than other feedback opportunities related to budget. Instead of staff kind of going through responses line by line and kind of just picking out things to present to the board, we actually ran an artificial intelligence tool over all responses in order to, without bias, pick out the major themes that were kind of global across all groups. So this is kind of a new approach for us. I think it was tremendously successful as we start to look at what the themes that, that the majority of our folks are saying about the budgetary process. Again, it's, it's not necessarily what individuals might have said, but really those consistent responses over and over and over again, where the AI was able to pick those up and said, here are the themes. So I want to spend a little time talking about those themes. And I want to start first with some of the really positive sentiments that we saw through the process. The overarching sentiment was the desire to do what's best for students. And, and we've talked about this many, many times. If we're making budget decisions with what's best in, what's best for students at the forefront, we will, our direction is sound, right? I mean, that, that is the guiding principle is, is the decision based on what's best for students, not necessarily what's best for adults, but what's best for students. Our staff understand that the budget challenges that we're going to experience are reflective of more than just spending issues, that really it is a reflection of a declining enrollment situation. And we're going to talk a little bit about that tonight. But that was, that was extremely positive for me to, to read through that and say, our staff get it. This isn't a spending issue as much as it is really kind of a revenue issue related to the fact that we've been in an enrollment decline since 2016. There is a desire for equitable and transparent decision-making. And we'll, we kind of see the flip side when we get to the challenges screen of that particular statement. But it, our staff really want to understand what we're doing, why we're doing it, how we got there. And, and we need to be very cognizant that there's a lot of concern about transparency as we go through this process. A commitment to preserve classroom supports for high need students. You heard about some of the programs tonight that have been the recipient of ESAR funding, COVID relief funding. That was, almost every survey we've done, including all of the ESAR surveys, have been, those supports are critical. Those people's supports are still needed in buildings. Please don't take away those additional supports over and over and over and over again. So as you see, as we walk through this process, again, that has been a very, very important theme through all of the surveys. That has ranked high on the list of every single response that we get. And we've taken that very seriously through this process. The other major concern was the willingness to, or a positive, I guess, in this case, there's the, there's a concern on the flip side of it. A willingness to accept that budget cuts may be necessary in order for salaries to keep pace with inflation. Salaries are critically important to our staff and rightly so, right? This is, this is important work. You've heard again tonight, all of the tremendous lifts that our people do every single day. That compensation, recruitment, retention, all of those pieces are very important to our staff. They are open to creative solutions in order to keep the people in the buildings. And they're open to keep salaries competitive. And they understand that some loss of services are somewhat, we're not, we're not going to avoid some of this. Because again, we've said it before, we can do anything we want. We cannot do everything we want. It is about making choices through this process. So as we look at the, kind of the concern sentiments, I think it will come as no surprise to the board that jobs was top of the list. And, and some of that kind of hails back to 2009, 10 through 2016, 17, when the district was in a, actually, we were growing enrollment, but that was the years of kind of following the great recession where base aid per pupil was actually in a decline. We were getting cut from the state. And those challenges were difficult because our enrollment was actually trending up. So we had to do with less dollars to serve more students. So a different kind of challenge than we have today, but still that, that deep concern over what about my job? But also what about the job next to me? Because we have learned that even though we may eliminate a person in a role, that work has to land somewhere. And there is a lot of concern about workload and what happens to, to not only my peer, but what happens to that work that my peer is doing? Am I going to have to do that? And those are valid concerns based on the history of previous cuts. The loss of the work to connect homes and schools. This is again been a kind of an ESAR initiative. You're seeing it in some of that future ready advocate work that where we're trying to connect and, and build all of these relationships. No one wants to take a step backward on that. So that, that's a valid concern. Again, the loss of the various support staff, particularly the para hours and the child study team, which would involve additional counselors, psychologists, social workers that we've put into place for the past few years with federal funding. Legitimate concerns about larger class sizes and caseloads. If we start to reduce staff and we're educating, even in a slight declining enrollment, we're still educating a certain number of students. Ever, there was a significant amount of concern that their class size would get too large to manage. And I think we have to acknowledge that that concern is real and be assured that as we make decisions, that we account for that in, in our decision-making process. Not cutting enough district administration. Looking at the non-attendance centers first for budget reductions was, and leaving that as far away from the classroom. And historically, we've, we've, we've made every effort to do that. Tonight, you'll see that was the first step we, we looked at was administrative costs. In the general administration pieces, remember, if you remember our little circle of, and I apologize to the new members, you're probably not as acclimated on some of this as, as I'd like you to be. Hopefully that you'll get the, the speed, the speed lesson tonight. But we spend only a little over 1% of our budget on general administration costs. So yes, we will cut general administration costs. We can't cut it enough to cover even a, a big portion of what, of the kind of the deficit we'll be looking at. We'll talk a little bit more about that as we get closer. Concern about cuts to extracurriculars. If you think of things that we've implemented in recent years, like esports that have really connected kids to schools, our staff does not want to see those go away. Anxiety that student needs won't be met. Distress about possible closures and boundary changes and all of the things that kind of upset the system. A lot of that's unknown. What will it mean? What will it look like? I think, you know, those are things we'll have to, to, to listen to and, and work through with our staff. Anxiety about other issues, right? We're, we're not, we're not in charge of our destiny solely, right? We are at the mercy of state funding, federal funding, all of those pieces that can have politics come into play. So it's about vouchers, it's about charter schools. What does that mean? Will they change the formula? Will they provide special ed? Will they not provide special ed? All of that is just additional stress. Again, dread over salary freezes. I can, I can see the sentiment coming from some of our longer-term employees who lived through salary freezes. That was painful for staff, difficult for them financially, emotionally, probably never felt like they caught up, even though we actually did make a lot of movement on step catch-up. But you can't go back and replace those years where we just missed it. So I think, again, understanding that that dread's real and assuring where we can, that, that again, we're, we are settled for 2024, '25. Our wage package is negotiated. We are moving forward with it. The numbers we present tonight embed that in our estimates. So there shouldn't be any concern about salary freezes for '24, '25. So taking the, kind of the positive and the negative, right? And kind of looking at how are those, how does all this feedback influence our recommendations and decisions and our use of resources, right? So I'm going to start, and the analogy's been used a lot, the three-legged stool. You look at the, kind of the primary drivers of resources for Wichita Public Schools and you get, you get, you kind of can condense it down to people, money and facilities. You could have put time in here too, but we're just going to leave it three. Works well for the analogy. People, money, facilities. We know money's important, right? We've, we've seen that over and over again when the system does not have enough dollars and you have to start making choices about programs you're going to reduce. Money is a key driver for salaries, so money's important. Facilities are important. It's been part of your strategic plan to make them safer, to make sure that they are well-kept, all of those things, right? And we've talked a lot to the board about facilities challenges over the years. But primarily, if you were, you remove any one of the legs, the stool will tip. But people are the biggest driver in this particular resource as far as academic outcomes, people. All of your anecdotal data would tell you that. All, your, your student that spoke earlier today, people. It was a people, it was, it was people. The work that Dr. Polite and his team are doing, people. McKinney Vento, people, working with people. People are the most important things. There's evidence-based information available. We look at, say, this is testing my academic knowledge, but Dr. Hattie's work as far as what's the most important item when it comes to the effectiveness of, or the impact for student achievement? It's the collective efficacy of teachers. I think I got that right. That's, that's the most important piece to academic achievement, period. We know from the Wallace Foundation how important the school principal is. And that's why we had been doing a lot of work related to the pipeline work. And that's not including your paras, your custodians that you can go, and I'm sure you have gone out to schools and met with, with students who will tell you that the custodian is actually the person they have the relationship with. So I mean, paras, the office staff and, and everyone that touches that school, it's the people that drive that bus, so to speak. And the bus drivers, by the matter of fact, have also. So you've seen, I've just come full circle on this, on the, on the, on the stool. All of these items are critically important, but people are the most important. And it's people challenges that we are struggling with. And we have shared this with the board on many different occasions. This is a slightly different look at it. We have currently over 250 vacancies. Every year, we will have about 400 or so retirements. We have a lot of positions in which we need people. This is a snapshot from last Friday's absence management report. So February 19th, we had a combination of 850 absences and vacancies. 703 of those needed to be fulfilled. We filled 457 for a fill rate of 65%. But 191 of our subs were covering vacancies. If we had had those subs covering absences and the vacancies were filled, our fill rate would have been close to 90%. So you really start to see, this is just a different angle of information we've given you a lot over the past couple of years, how critical having people in the seats in our schools is. And this is a challenge for us because we have a lot of seats open. Money challenges. We've talked about our enrollment decline situation. This is not unique to Wichita Public Schools. Every large urban school district, there might be an exception or two out there, but the majority of large urban school districts are in a declining enrollment position. Many of them experienced that large drop following COVID. And those students have not returned. Now, whether they're homeschooling or making an opportunity of a private opportunity, whatever it is, they have not come back to public ed. We are no exception to that. We've actually done better than most. Our drop in, in the COVID year was 5%. We're overall approaching eight and a half. This year, we audited out a little bit better than anticipated because early estimates were showing us over nine for this timeframe, 2016 to 2023. We're at 8.4% decline. The more concerning statistic here is that none of the demographic data that we have forecasting beyond '23, '24 shows any change to the descent. We are still forecasted to be in decline. The, the rates of decline vary depending on which study you're looking at. But even if we anticipate just a 1% decline year over year, you can see where we'll be in another 10 years. So, and again, remember, our formula is, is student FTE-driven. That's how we get our funding. So if we are in decline, it impacts our, the revenue side of our budget, which means we have to adjust the expenditure side of our budget as those revenues go down. We've been, we've been pretty, pretty lucky so far in that we've hedged a good chunk of the decline with base aid going up as the inflationary impact on base aid can, kind of goes back to what would be considered normal. Instead of getting four or 5% per year, we're going to be down into the 1%, 2% or 3% per year for base aid. And then we'll have enrollment decline on top of that. So again, we see, we see no major change in the enrollment decline situation for Wichita Public Schools in the foreseeable future, outside of maybe a, a little blip here and there. The other money challenge we have, and we've talked a lot about the end of federal COVID relief funding, is when you embed historic federal funding into a school's budget. And in our case, it was well north of $270 million in this timeframe. Your system will feel it. And I think we've really done a remarkable job in limiting the exposure ongoing, but we have some. And there are two pieces, two primary pieces for us. The first piece is the $20 million of federal funding that we use to balance the budget. And we made this choice, the board approved this choice back when we were looking at raises for 2022, 2023. That was the year we took the 2,600 student reduction into the budget. Again, we were still somewhat reeling from kind of COVID impacts. Students still were exhibiting some behaviors. We needed the additional staff we'd put into place. And we were still actually having quite a few issues with, again, filling spots. And our, even some of our employees, we were still kind of sickly as far as dealing with staff absences. So we, we talked a lot with the board at that time as far as the risk of using one-time money for a wage package. But at that point, it was, it was determined the wage, the wages for staff was more important. And we used one, we knew it, we went into it eyes open, knew that at some point, when the federal dollars were done, we would have to address that shortfall from a budgetary perspective. And we will need to do that for '24, '25. I'd make that decision myself. I would hope the board would say the same. We'd do it again because that was the right thing to do at the right time, for the right reasons. The other piece of the ESAR funding that we've used to support the budget was for, again, the paras, counselors, social workers, all of those support positions, some of which you've kind of heard about a little bit tonight, that our survey data says, this is critical. This is critical. This is critical. So what we really don't want to do is ignore that and say, okay, well, sorry, we ought to cut all $20 million. We're, we've got to look at holistically, let's, let's start and let's embed what we have. And then let's figure out, at least over time, what we can transition back and what we need to keep. But the two pieces together is $40 million of federal funding, one-time funding that as of '24, '25, we won't have because we will be done with ESAR spending by June 30th. So we have to figure out, how do we adjust '24, '25 budget for these pieces? And then the third leg is the facility challenges. You heard from our consultant Cooperative Strategies in December. They started, started you with some, some data points they've looked at. But we've been talking facilities and capital outlay challenges since 2018. And I'm going to, actually, in a minute, we'll go through a whole timeline of all the things that, that we've talked about. But we are a district built for 63,000 students. We currently educate 47,000 students and change. By definition, we are under utilizing square footage in our buildings, specifically elementary and middle. This is really not a high school problem at this point. It's elementary, where we've seen a decline of enrollment primarily. It is in middle, where we've started to see that decline start to push into middle. And we have more available space in middle. So it is, it is an elementary and middle under utilization primary issue. The physical age and the system replacement needs of many of our buildings, not just one, but many of them are great. Because again, we've told you, the average age of our building is, buildings as a whole is over 60 years old, which means a good number of them are falling north of 60. There, they are, many of them are to the point where it makes more sense to replace than to fix or replace the systems, replace the building because it's not cost efficient anymore. So, and right now, we've shared, you, capital outlay is tapped. We'll get through the ESAR projects. We'll finish that. We'll provide funding for facilities to do some design and construction work. But the repairs that are being, that are necessary at some of our buildings, because of the age, are getting more and more expensive. And the breakages are becoming a little bit more frequent. So we are, we are, at this point, somewhat unable to keep up with the replacement of those major repair systems. We've, we're treading water pretty well. We're not in, we're not in dire straits. But that's what the, that's what the consultant said is, you're going to have to take some action because you can't maintain this. And that's, that's, we would concur. And that's why we've been talking about this for a number of years now. The result of that, all of those things, really money, people and facilities, is we are spreading our resources too thin. And forgive if this is a poor analogy, but if I have, if I had a nine-inch pie and I gave it to the board tonight and said, I'm going to cut you each, each a piece of this pie for dessert. You each get a decent slice of pie and you feel pretty satisfied. You might want a second one, but you don't need a second one, right? One piece would be enough. You'd feel pretty good. If I take that pie and I spread it over the rest of the room, they're not getting a piece of pie. They're getting a bite of pie at best. And that's if it makes it to every single person in the room. That's what our finances feel like for our schools. They're getting a bite of pie. They're not satisfied. They're not able to meet every need they have because we are spreading that pie too thin across 90 attendant, attendant centers and the administrative buildings. For, for a district that is not 63,000 students, we're 47,000 students. So, and when you spread those resources too thin, you start to lose impact. And we wonder why on some of the things we talk about, well, what are they, what's the outcome data? Well, could it be that we didn't resource it appropriately? That we didn't provide enough supports? I mean, we have to ask ourselves those questions. This is, this is looking at what the choices that we've made and, and kind of saying is, is it a resource problem? The program might be great, but did we actually put money, time, people, whatever behind it? The ability to innovate, very tough because there's no money left. It's all allocated to all of the various initiatives, rebuildings, supports that we have in place. So when, when we have that, that's a great idea. Everyone looks to, to finance, well, can we do it? Like, what are we not going to do? We can do anything, can't do everything. And it becomes very hard to go in and say, okay, well, we're going to pick this off or pick this off. That's a challenge for us, right? Because again, a lot of these programs are having impact. Some of them are having great impact over a very small segment of students. Some of them are having a little impact over a great number of students, which is right, which is wrong. It's, right and wrong is not, that's tough. It is what it is. You have to make those choices. And we can't staff the buildings. Every single building has vacancies, has long-term subs in place. We can't fill the spots we have. Kind of looking at it from, this is a slide that Cooperative Strategies had, looking at it kind of visually. And I'm just going to focus on the utilization pieces. We have one school that sits in the target zone for utilization. That's one high school, meaning that there, where we want the number of kids to be at around 80, 80 to 85%, that building to be 80 to 85% full, we have one building that kind of fits that definition. of fits that definition. The rest are less than that. Or, and/or, they're very old. Because that's, as we go higher on the chart, primarily, it's a factor of age. It could be a factor of other repair needs. But we have one school in the sweet spot of, it's a newer building and it's full. So we've got a lot of capacity, and we've got a lot of buildings that are kind of sitting in that where they're aging kind of out of where we would like them to be. So if we take the board back, and this was really for the new board members, more benefit because some of you have been around at least a few of these years. In February of 2018, we presented our, kind of our first aging building deferred maintenance capital need presentation to the board at that time. We had estimated back then that we were in the $200 to $300 million deferred maintenance. And we had, at that point, we were asking for some software to help better track and determine what that real number was. We had a pretty good idea, but they were kind of living on spreadsheets and in different systems, and we said, we really need to get a good idea of what our exposure is. And we were doing that back as early as February of 18. In February of 19, the board approved the move on the LOB authority. We didn't exercise it, but we moved the LOB authority to 33% because costs continue to rise. Particularly, this case was because we anticipated a large transportation increase coming. But there were other rising costs, property casualty, again, keeping up with wages, all of those things. It was really, the board was seeing that pressure, and we determined we needed the ability to go to 33% on the LOB, which is the cap. Can't go any further than that. In February of '20, as we looked at that transportation increase, we exercised that LOB authority to basically hedge the declining enrollment problem, pay for the transportation contract and other rising costs. March of '20, we have COVID, followed by historic federal aid. And really, the historic federal aid is why we've been able to continue on for a few years without having to address some of these core problems. They've covered the shortfalls that we've had and helped us quite a bit on the facility side. We'd have been in a much different situation had we not been able to invest $80 million into some of our kind of HVAC issues and those type of things. August of 2020, the 2,600 student loss occurs. We make really no significant adjustments to staffing at that point because we were in that kind of hybrid model of education, plus we had a lot of illness. So we really did not want to start cutting staff in order to address an enrollment loss when we needed everybody that we could get into buildings and/or online, as the case was. In August of '21, if some of you might recall, we actually built the budget on the assumption that some of that student count would return. It did not. And so we actually, again, we started to kind of look to federal funding to fill some of those gaps. HR gave a formal presentation on staff shortages. And then in January, February, 2022, that's when we shared with the board, hey, we'd love to do a wage package. We don't have the funds. Do you want to use the federal funds to do it? And the board said yes. August of '22, we have actually a slight enrollment decline, but we start to feel the impacts of the tax credits on our enrollment numbers. So we're still in this posture. We're still declining. And then what have we done in this past year? In January of 2023, we had announced that we were starting to pull back on ESAR spending. So at that point, we said nothing new. We'll start to look at attrition plans. February of '23, the board approves a demographic and enrollment study. March of '23, we gave an updated report on the capital outlay budget, and it's kind of insufficiency to handle our issues long-term. We are okay short-term for kind of those immediate day-to-day needs, but long-term, we were not going to have enough in that fund to address some of our capital needs. April of 2023, again, I think in my presentation, I continued to mention staff challenges. Staffing is a challenge. July of '23, you start to hear a little bit more coming from facilities as far as that one, that's when we announced the $1.2 billion number of deferred maintenance, and that's not repairs that aren't being made. That's systems that are at end of life that we are stretching to last longer. $1.2 billion, that was the number we presented. October 2023, the board authorizes a consultant to come in and take those data pieces and put together a facilities master plan. And then in December, you had the first presentation from that group. And all of that work, right, has kind of led us to, here comes our situation, right? Here's where the rubber meets the road as far as what are we looking at related to the fiscal year '24, '25, school year, and our shortfall? It's big. It's a big number. It's $42 million that we are short for '24, '25. To put it in perspective, the year that we changed the district's calendar in order to save money, that year was a $22 million cut year, and the calendar was one of the last things that got implemented. It was one of the first items we reversed when funds started coming back in because that particular decision had a whole lot of unintended consequences. Elementary kids weren't getting home till after 6:00 PM. It was just a thing. So it is a significant number. Some of this is related to the wage package that we passed, which again, we needed to be competitive. We needed to get those spots filled. I think we've had some progress in filling some of our spots. We've not had enough, which would continue to say this needs to be a focus for us. But we have started to try to look at how do we start to phase changes in and start to bring this number down to something we can manage? So here's the work that has begun. Again, our feedback said, start with administration. Try to stay away from classrooms. We plan at this point to administer a 5% minimum, so that's not a final number, but a 5% minimum cut to non-school budgets. So this is not, this won't be a schools per pupil allocation. It's not any of the school-specific budgets. It may have some indirect impacts on what the secondary or elementary office can do for a school, but it is program budgets. They have to take a 5% cut, and they have to figure out what they're not going to do within each one of those budgets in order to balance. And that's work that will be going on with those programs from February through May. And hopefully, that's sufficient. We'll have to see how we progress through the other parts of our phases. We will take the ESAR-supported non-school positions, and we will move them to other budgeted spots, remembering that we have 250 vacancies right now and potentially 400 more coming. We have spots to move people that are currently funded by ESAR. This is not a case where we will have to eliminate people. We may eliminate positions and move people, but jobs as far as an individual person working for USD 259, we have a space for everybody. Short of the state coming in and doing something really wonky with the formula, which again, I can't guarantee that other factors might not come into play, but based on what's in front of us right now, that is not our plan. We will recapture and eliminate non-school positions through attrition. We have eight so far and more to come. So as non-school positions are turning, we are analyzing each one, and someone has to make a very compelling argument why we keep it. Because again, we got $42 million we're trying to deal with. And then any ESAR-supported initiatives that are non-people-based, the program has to either figure out if they want to keep it, how do they keep it within the budget allocation they currently have, or it comes to an end. And there's not a tremendous number of these. A lot of it lives in software, so we'll work through that with the IST group. There are some school-related reductions that we have kind of looked at and started to implement. A lot of them have to do with vacancies. Any ESAR vacancy that was a school-based vacancy, we said, you can't fill that anymore, right? We're going to cut the school vacancy that was ESAR-funded. And if you need it, we can hear the facts. But again, if it was an ESAR ad and we don't have a person for that role, we're not going to fill it with other funds at this point. We are analyzing and implementing para FTE changes as attrition occurs. So this is primarily occurring in special ed, where if we have an ESAR-funded special ed, so we added hours to the position, and by adding hours, that position became benefited as the person in that role leaves for another opportunity or leaves the district. We are looking at, do we need that position to have that number of hours? If so, is there another vacancy out there that we can actually cut and support the position at that particular school? So right now, it's more of a sped analysis exercise of, as positions turn, not people, but as positions turn, can we support it and can we have a reduced number of them based on a variety of factors? Very early in that work, again, focusing primarily on vacancies at this point. There are some avid footprint changes. I think we're going to talk a little bit about that here in a minute. We are reassigning any remaining non-child study team members and non-behavior ESAR positions, and there's not very many of them, maybe 10 to 15, into other budgeted spots because a lot of them are certified staff. We have a lot of certified openings, right? We have a lot of places to put certified folks. So again, for those 10 or 15 that were doing an ESAR-supported role, we'll just move them back into another particular position that fits their licensing and all those things. And then we are pausing the administrative internship program as we go into fiscal year '25 and beyond. It's a good program. We had a lot of good feedback. Right now, it's just one of those that has to wait, and we'll see if we can come back to it. So that's work that's been really kind of commenced in earnest after we received the feedback. So we looked at that feedback in December, started to make some final decisions in early January and started that implementation, discussions with staff and principals all through kind of the last few weeks in January. We, all of those actions, we get $9 million. So we've made progress. We still have $33 million to go. So as we look at that particular number, and if we kind of flip it from a negative just for a minute, it's a lot of money, but it is an opportunity for operational and financial change. And really, we have a number of problems that need to be addressed in some form or fashion. We have enrollment loss. We have staffing challenges. We have a large deferred maintenance backlog, aging infrastructure. We have the $40 million of one-time money in the budget, and we really are underutilized in our buildings. Those are real facts. We have the data to support every single one of those. And as we go back to our three-legged stool, what one action potentially shores up all three legs? Well, it's a hard one, right? It is, it's hard to even say the words, right? I mean, because it's emotional. And if I've worked here for 15 years, it's emotional to say, the answer that solves those three problems is reduce the number of school buildings. And it's hard. That's a hard, it's hard to say. It's hard to think about. But if we look at kind of a Phase 2, right? So we don't want to fill the $33 million whole school closet. That would be a tremendous systems issue. I don't know that we could even do it. But what can we potentially accomplish? What we're thinking right now is, in a suggested Phase 2, where we're trying to achieve about half of that $33 million that's left on the table to fill, so we're looking for about $16 million. We could look at the building closure option, or we do then, if we don't want to do that for a variety of reasons, we can look at staff cuts. There isn't big pieces of the budget that really move the needle, other than people and facilities. Even looking at transportation, which is a big budget in and of itself, we wouldn't eliminate transportation. We would have some form of transportation and understanding a lot of that special ed, and a lot of it is state aid specific to transportation. So again, you start to see, we can look at various things. We don't get enough daylight into our number. So again, we look at the pros and cons kind of of just these two of a Phase 2, right? Building closures, reduce the pros. I don't even like the terminology, because better than positive and negative, but reduce the deferred maintenance, right? If we're not, the building isn't open, we won't make repairs, we won't invest in HVAC replacement. The building, eventually, something happens to it, whether it sells or we have a long-term strategy for whatever it is, that deferred maintenance issue becomes less for us. People can be moved from that school to existing spots and fill the vacancies. That, to me, is one of the biggest pros we would have, is when we're people short, we could move the people to where we need them to be. We focus resources, going back to the pie analogy. Maybe everybody gets a little bit more than a bite of pie. Maybe they get a sliver, or at least a start of a sliver, and then we hopefully eventually can give them more and more pie. It's an efficient use of our tax dollars. If we look at that as still one of our core missions is to be responsible to the taxpayer, it's starting to say, how do we efficiently use the dollars we're given? Part of that is making the footprint of the district based on the number of students we have, not on 63,000. And it does prioritize people. Going back to what's the most important leg of the stool, it's people. The con here cannot be minimized, right? As far as the impact on the students, the parents, and the staff of a closed building. Hard. Emotionally difficult. The quick implementation that we would be proposing, which is, we make some recommendation if the board authorizes us to look at it, right? Because at this point, all we're saying is, this is one possible approach in a Phase 2 of a $33 million remaining budget cut. At this point, you've not given us the okay to even look at it. So there is no, there's not a list, there's no decision made. We will be asking you at the end, can we explore it? If you say no, we're going to look at the right side of our option, which is looking at staff cuts. The equivalent number of $16 million of staff cuts, if it's just certified staff, is 230 certified staff. If it's a mix of certified, the administrator ranks, and classified ranks, it's more than 230 people. Because the bottom half of that would be less than the average teacher's salary. So it does become, it's not necessarily only an either-or, but in this case, if we don't like either of those options on Phase 2, I'm not exactly sure what we're going to bring back that's going to get us to $33 million. So, but the quick implementation of this as a budget strategy is a con, right? Because what we really wanted to do, I think, overall, is let Cooperative Strategies do the work of facilities master planning. That's a long-term strategy of how we get from where we're at from a footprint of buildings to what we want to be. And that's the work that will be done. That's the long-term track. Unfortunately, because of a budget issue, we need a short-term solution that may involve some mix of options that could include closure of buildings. The timing is not great. If we had that master plan, we'd have a clear roadmap on that piece. We don't have that today. But what we do know is that there are dollars to be saved from a building closure, not every dollar we spend at that building. Because again, the building would still be here with us. We'd still have to maintain it to a certain degree. We won't lose every staff member as far as that position. Some positions may need to move with students. But we will save utilities. We'll save property casualty eventually, but we'll save some operational dollars out of the chute potentially. But again, the timing is a con. There's no doubt about it. And the fairly quick turnaround of decisions, if we would explore it, if we bring back some sort of recommendation, the board makes a decision. It has to go through several steps in this whole process, and then operationally, what happens? It has to go through several steps in this whole process and how, and then operationally, what happens? Where do kids go? What do the boundaries look like? All of that is really fairly fast for us. So that is a con. And then whatever decisions we're making related to the short-term budgetary need may not be finalized until the master plan. So there may end up being a second go-round of boundary changes or. Another recommendation of another batch of potential closures or whatever that looks like. Where we won't be done. This is a budget situation that's causing us to look at a short-term solution. If we look at the staff side, the only pro that I could even come up with is it would defer. Closure of buildings. And I say defer because ultimately. I think if we've not made that crystal clear yet, we cannot continue and maintain at the level. Of of buildings we have today. From a purely maintenance standpoint, we cannot keep up with it. We just can't. We're we're doing the best we can. Our buildings are safe. Cooperative strategy said it, we agree. We can't do it. We're going to hit that point of where it starts to turn to a place we don't want to go. And we want to be out ahead of that before the turn occurs. Staff cuts, again, the the con is that, look at your feedback. Your feedback says people are important. Teachers, paras, students, all of nurses, all your child study team. That's what your survey data says. That's what's important. So if we start to cut people. And we don't cut positions, are we just worsening an already bad situation? So again, and and the cuts would have to impact every building, every student, every department in some form or fashion. Some more than others, because again, some schools are very full. Very difficult for those schools to cut because they need their people. But if they have to cut, they have to go through and decide who, how, when. At a small school that only has two sections, who do you cut? Because then you're left with a class of thirty-five and we go back to our class, our our class size data and says, well, that's a problem. So again, it just creates a whole lot of issues as we go through, which do we go? Understand this is phase two, we're recommending, we try to get to a sixteen million dollar number, which still leaves. About seventeen million dollars for a phase three. So we're, we won't be finished. What we will do potentially in phase three is look at, again, continued work related to attrition. Other program changes similar to what we are suggesting for Avid. And the use of some cash balance to keep phase two to a minimum. And yet not put the district in such a place where it's worried about if it can cash flow its payroll. So that's, it's it's balancing, how much cash do we use? Because again, using one-time cash balances is the same problem we have with using Esser. We can do that for a year and then we're in the same predicament in the following year. So we do want to try to keep that option fairly minimal. Understanding that cash balances are not a budgetary solution. If we look at our cash forecast, we think we're going to end twenty-four with about fifty-four million dollars of cash. Again, thinking through that we knew we would potentially want to use some to help soften a. One-year change over two at a minimum. But if we use all the cash in twenty, that we have in twenty-four and twenty-five to avoid making any decision. We're already down to eleven and a half million dollars by the end of twenty-five. And I will tell you, at eleven and a half million dollars, because of the way we spend our dollars, right? We spend at the beginning of a school year and we spend at the end of the school year. End of the school year is teacher contract payouts, beginning of the school, school year is all our major contract pays. Our money does not come in equally month over month. It comes in at certain points. Our spending is not equal. So as we're using cash down, we may not have enough cash coming in to replace it. And then it becomes a, will we have enough if we use down all those reserves? I'd be want to be the first one in line to the bank if that's the case, right? So and in twenty-six, you're thirty-five million dollars in the hole, you legally cannot operate that way. And that's, that's the, that's the problem with a cash solution. It can be used to help spread it. But it is not going to solve it. Long-term. So again, why are we making this particular recommendation tonight? The options we have in front of us are all hard. Closing a building is hard. Cutting staff is hard. Ending programs is hard. There are no easy options. We have an opportunity to choose the hard, to make the right decision based on what's what's best for kids. Every student future-ready moving forward. We've reviewed the data. You've heard the data from from cooperative strategies. You've seen our data, hopefully some of you since two thousand eighteen, if you've been watching, some of you more recently. Hopefully you've looked at the feedback from all the surveys we've given, superintendent search. Strategic plan, some of the Esser stuff that we presented. And again, how do we continue to support the strategic plan, right? That's, that's the ultimate goal is how do we build this framework that supports every student future-ready to achieve the four goals that we've set? So our recommendation tonight specifically is what we're looking for is the board to give. Staff permission to look at limited building reduction options. To address some of the fiscal year twenty-five budget deficit and 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 help with staffing challenges. And really, I didn't put it in here, but and the facility challenges until that larger facility master plan is complete. So I think Superintendent Billifield had a couple of comments he'd like to make before we open this, open this for discussion and question.
Thank you, Susan. I know, you know, these aren't new conversations in a lot of ways, but. It's kind of getting us to the point where, you know, we need to, we need some. Guidance from you all as far as direction to head. I think in the way that we presented it tonight, just for terms of your discussion and Q and A, if this is okay. Maybe we can start with phase one. If there's any questions you have about specifically about phase one. We could, we could talk about those first and then we can go into phase two. That way we're not kind of mixing up, you know, all the, all the different questions, so. Based on that, I didn't know if anybody had anything we needed to bring clarity to. Hazel?
Yeah, I just had a question. You were talking about five percent minimum cut. The schools were make each making five percent cuts, is that, and you said February to May, is that happening, that's happening right now?
We, it, non-school, non-school budgets, it's a five percent cut. So the programs will receive their information. We usually wait until July thirty-first so that they can see where their forecast is for the remainder of the school year.
January thirty-first?
Did I say, what did I say?
You said July, that's all right.
I'm already thinking your end. January thirty-first, they forecast what, where they're going to be. They are going to be given an option of here's what five percent less looks like, what would you do? And then we'll probably do another number, whether it's seven percent or ten percent, so that we don't have to go back to them later if we have to go deeper. So they will get their forms sometime first week of February, looking at budget. So it'll be, theirs will be coming hopefully in a week or two as far as. All the, all the leadership knows this was on on the table. But the actual mechanics of going through the planning will occur starting in February.
Okay, thank you.
Kathy, do you have questions on phase one?
Okay.
Julie?
I'm on phase one.
Okay.
This is just talking about this same item, the five percent minimum cut to non-school program budgets. What things are included in that?
How, so like, I would be a non, finances, a non-program budget, HR is a non-program budget. Magnet would be considered a non-program, or a non-school, these are all non-school budgets. So they're programs specifically. Elementary as an office has a budget, so they are a non-school budget. All of, basically, when you look at our budget at a glance, all of the bottom, they, all that list of. Programs on the bottom, that's all of the programs that we'd be looking at a five percent.
So basically, any line item that isn't Adam School, Buckner School.
Correct.
Any of those line items in a five percent minimum cut. And you're saying that the five percent again would be minimum and then if the five percent wasn't sufficient. And you needed to do more, then you might move to six percent for all of those or seven percent for all of those.
Correct. But we, at this point, we, again, if we think that five percent's overall, what we are looking at kind of from a. Top-level budget reduction, we're hoping that five percent at the program level should be sufficient to. At least get us kind of where we want to go.
With these other things to accommodate the nine million dollar.
Correct.
That's a part of phase one.
Correct.
That answers my question.
Melody?
Thank you. I I have a question actually about Avid. So I'm looking at budget changes, phase one, school reductions. And it speaks to Avid footprint changes. So is now an appropriate time?
Yep.
So. When looking at Esser dollars, that actually. Was the reason for us being able to implement Avid at the elementary level? I believe when we did, we built out to include Avid at the elementary level with Esser dollars specifically?
Yes, we already had some Avid at the elementary. It allowed us to expand it, is that?
So we were able to expand, build out?
Yes, yes.
And with that. My understanding in conversations is that. And I think you spoke to this too, and that is all of the different circles and or the groups that we went to or we. Coalesced so that we could gather the information from them. Some of that was from actual staff at buildings. And my understanding is that elementary staff were somewhat aware. That more than likely, the build-out of Avid, maybe not the complete. But the build-out of Avid was tied to Esser dollars. So when Esser dollars were gone, more than likely, that program would be gone. Is that your understanding?
I would. I would say it's a pretty fair assumption that all things that started with Esser money, people were aware. Now, over the course of three years, do we get comfortable, do we try to assume? So yeah, I would, but but yes, I do think pretty much everybody that knew. Your position is funded through Esser was also aware, you know, in twenty twenty-four. You know, that that money was gone and so we'd have to make some determinations.
Right, but I think realistically, as you said, you get comfortable. You see some benefit, so it may be difficult. It may be challenging for for those dollars to go away and for those programs to go away. Particularly when we look at the benefits in some Esser programs that. Group, instead of coalesced, site council, principals advisory group. Schools where they've identified which programs that they really want to keep. Even though they're Esser dollar funded, correct?
Yes.
So there are those.
Yes.
So there are those. But. In this phase one, exactly what Avid. Programming will either pare down to reduce the footprint or go away?
Great question. I think to to answer it as as directly as I can, we're still working on some of that, right? We don't know a hundred percent of what that looks like, but I do think we have communicated with the secondary schools about some changes that are going on there. And if Dr. Hatfield wants to come to the podium. And give us maybe a. If Melody's okay with a Cliff Notes version of.
Oh, certainly.
Okay, kind of where we're at with with the strategy and kind of what we're trying to do. By reducing the scope but also strengthening the program.
Right, so really the goal is to maximize student choice but minimize cost is the. The problem that we're faced with, but it's also can be an opportunity instead of a problem to to do so. So currently, we have eight hundred and eighty-six students in high, we'll talk high school because it's, you know, to not muddy the waters, we'll just talk high school. Eight hundred and eighty-six students that are enrolled in Avid across forty-seven sections. Across seven different schools. That equates to a little over eighteen kids per section. So could we still offer all of those seats? But do it at less locations, right? It's similar to what Susan was describing with closing buildings. Can we offer more seats at less locations to minimize cost? But still maximize student opportunity to take that class? And so that is the goal of reducing the footprint. It's actually allows more students to take the class, but it reduces places where it belongs. So that we can be effective with our dollars and make those programs premier dollars or premier programs. That we have instead of dribbling resources to all of the different secondary buildings. So myself and the Avid team met to talk about what programs already have strengths. And what schools have demographics that most closely mirror what says in the Avid CSI. These are the type of kids we want in the Avid elective class, because in the secondary world, we're talking about an elective class. And so that's how we narrow down the schools that it's going to be at are those two big pieces of criteria is. Current status of the program at the school and demographics of the school most mirroring. What Avid is looking for in their elective class. And do you want me to go through literally line by line by line?
No.
Or is that enough of a Cliff Notes?
Oh, just another question for me. I appreciate that, Dr. Hatfield. What, what I'm interested in knowing is what was the criteria when you talk about narrowing it down and or identifying what we want? In a Avid premier school and what type of, what's what the student? What's the profile of the student that we want in an Avid program? What does that look like and how did that narrow this footprint? How will it narrow or how will it reduce the footprint? By by knowing what the criteria is that we're looking for?
So when you, when you say, when you speak to the demographic, the CSI, I think.
Yeah, so Avid asks you to look for kids in the middle, right? That's what they talk about a lot. So these are, so they, a first-generation college student, a student who has high academic potential. But not maybe isn't reaching that high academic potential because they don't have access to. Some of the same resources that some of their peers do. Maybe if if you have a family that, if you have parents that went to college. You have more access to how do I get into college and what is that process like? Than a kid who doesn't have anybody in their family who has gone to a post-secondary institution. And would need help navigating that. So Avid pretty repeatedly defines kids to be in the elective class as students in the middle. And then they have a profile. And that's actually how, when you apply to be in Avid, that's part of the criteria that's listed on there. In the application for Avid staff to determine who gets in and who doesn't get in. Is do they fit the profile of this student in the middle as defined by Avid the organization, not by Wichita Public Schools?
Right. So I'm trying to get to how we narrowed the footprint.
How did we pick the four, the four high schools we're going to keep it at?
Yeah.
Is it, okay.
Yeah, so we analyzed data about current enrollment in different high schools. And in high school feeder patterns, as well as looked at which high school, their demographics of the neighborhood where the high school is. Best matches the demographics of a student in the middle. And put those two things in combination to choose the four. And we didn't want to reduce the number of seats available. Because if we have sections of thirty going through each high school, we're actually going to have, we would have seats for nine hundred and sixty kids. In high school Avid when currently we only have eight hundred and eighty-six kids in high school Avid. It would just be in less physical locations instead of spread out across the city.
So it sounds to me like we are actually, in going premier. And looking at the efficiency, that we are actually focusing on the very students. That we know should be in this program based on this criteria. And from a data perspective. And best practices that, it's proven, it's proven out that these students flourish. And need this additional help. The only, the only challenge, because I know that from a board perspective, from a board member perspective. By narrowing the footprint. Avid programs will not be necessarily available. by narrowing the footprint, Avid programs will not be necessarily available in every area of the city where our schools are located. That's challenging.
Right. So we tried to also pick schools in the main vein, right? So the high schools and their feeders, so it's heights, north, east and south, right? So we tried to get the main vein to, so the kids could go there. And we have an internal special transfer process. And so the other piece is if you're a student at Northwest and you are interested in the Avid program, you can special transfer and we would grant you that special transfer to attend one of the four schools that does have the Avid program because we don't want to restrict access to kids. But we need to do a better job of using our resources by pooling them in, in fewer spots so that we can maximize our potential. Because even FTE wise, every six Avid classes we offer, we've spent a whole FTE on that Avid class. Well, if there's less sections, that means more sections of math. That means more sections of English. That means more sections of science, et cetera, et cetera. So you're also weighing the other courses you can offer when you offer less sections of that elective course.
I appreciate the detail. It's really very helpful. And I'm hoping that those that are listening are benefiting from it because it's definitely opening my eyes to the decision-making that's gone on behind, maybe not behind, I don't want to say behind the scenes, but certainly the makeup of how we got to this decision. Thank you.
Anybody else while I'm here?
Julie, so when Avid footprint changes is listed in phase one of budget reductions, are we just talking about this high school piece or are we also talking about middle school and elementary?
Yes, we were, we're talking about middle school and elementary too. We, we haven't worked out all the details as far as what the elementary piece means beyond kind of the ESER situation. But, but yeah, it, it's K-12. And, and an ultimate goal, we want to, we want to keep Avid. We believe in it as a district. But like all things we're talking about tonight, right, we're, we're making choices, you know? If, if we were booming enrollment and we were going up five percent every year, we're probably not having this conversation.
Right.
But it's a, it's a matter of resources and not losing things, but make, keeping them strong, but also at the same time making good, being good stewards of, of the money, so.
And even though it hasn't been defined yet at the elementary level, it appears to be that it'll move along the, if it was added with ESER funds, it'll kind of follow that pattern of then it's going to be lost when there's no longer ESER funds. Did I hear that correctly?
Yeah, there, there's some nuance to that, but yes.
But basically.
I think ultimately we would like a K-12 option for, for the one, you know, for the, for the secondary. So secondary is a little bit ahead. They kind of have it figured out. But we don't have all the feeder pattern pieces figured out to line that up yet. So that should come early February.
And at middle school, kind of how is it looking or has, has that not been discussed yet?
That's been determined and there's a, there's a middle school feeder pattern underneath all four of those who will also have it so that it.
Okay. So it'll basically be the same concept as the high school.
Yeah. So middle, middle school mirrors high school exactly. And we chose middle schools that feed into the high schools because it also doesn't make sense to choose middle schools that don't feed into high schools that are going to have the Avid program. Even though we do have special transfers and will grant those special transfers, we also want to be intentional about making sure there's alignment in the system, K-12, and not just randomly making decisions that actually create misalignment and then inefficiencies.
Noak?
Yes, so from my understanding of the research, when it comes to Avid, there is strong empirical support for it, especially when you compare students, especially again, students in that demographic of first generation, students of color, low income. And you compare those students that go through the Avid program with, again, similar students that did not go through the program. You see improved executive functioning. You see a greater likelihood of graduating from high school and attending college and graduating from college. Do we have that kind of data available to us locally?
We, we do have, we do have some of that data, not all of it. It does get hard once kids get into college to track them because they have to give us permission to track them. But we do have some of that data about retention rates and post-secondary effectiveness rates. We have data about that for Avid and non-Avid students. And as Kelly said earlier, it's not, we don't want to devalue it and say, we don't love this. In fact, we're increasing seats available through this program. But it's about being more effective with our resources. Because that program hasn't been effective, we need to keep it. We just have to figure out how to keep it and keep it better than what we currently have.
Yeah, I think my concern is more so in terms of inequity in terms of access to opportunity. Because, you know, the students that, you know, will eventually have these Avid programs discontinued, like what is the alternative in terms of college career preparation if quite frankly, like they don't want to move schools? Again, and there's going to be like a transportation cost to that and certainly like a social cost to that. So I'm wondering, you know, for those schools that, and I should say, you know, just district wide, how are we ensuring that for schools that are, you know, sadly discontinuing the Avid program that, you know, we're still having, we're still adequately preparing students for college and career preparation? And I'll say too, you know, my positionality, I am an Avid kid, right? You know, I, you know, went through it through middle school, all the way through high school. I saw firsthand the impact it had on, you know, my fellow peers. And so one of the key components from my perspective, if you can speak to this too, was like that relationship building, right? That longevity in terms of, you know, you know, being paired up with a teacher, not just for one semester or two semesters, but again, a longer term. And so I'm curious, what considerations will DLT make to, you know, you know, ensuring all students, even with these schools that are, you know, discontinuing Avid, that we still have those opportunities?
Yeah, that's a super fair question. And, you know, if we, we could do a public service announcement together related to Avid. I had the opportunity to be an Avid teacher, an Avid coordinator as well when I was in the schools. And a lot of that work, Noak, is doing our restorative work. How do we marry that with our advocacy classes? Do we need to create in our advocacy classes the same sort of feel and family that we have in our Avid classes? How can we use the lessons that we've learned from such an amazing program, but spread it out to everyone? So everyone has access and not just students that are in this one particular elective course. So work that we're going to have to do over the next two, three, four years is how do we access those ideals that we know are successful, but access those ideals for everyone and not just this group? And, and that's work that we're committed to.
So, and, and I would, I would also, I'm glad you brought up the equity piece because I do think that's, that's essential to kind of having as part of the conversation. But, but I do think it's important to note, you know, Avid currently is an application process. It isn't equitable, right? We don't let every kid in, right? You have to, you have to get in by certain criteria. So as we think about access and how we offer access, right? I think our special transfer process is something we're going to continue to, to monitor and evaluate probably more so into, into next, not next year, but the following year. But, you know, we don't want a kid's zip code to determine their opportunities. You know, we, we have great opportunities. Dr. Polite spoke to it. Some of the best opportunities in the nation, but we want to allow every kid to have that opportunity to get there. So if, if I'm interested in agriculture, I get to go to southeast. If I'm interested in automotive, I can go to north or south, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I think a piece of it that's on us as staff is monitoring the demand to know that if these things are in demand, we need to make an adjustment to respond and not just say, well, we've always done it this way. So we're going to continue to have X opportunities over here that aren't, aren't in high demand and ignore all these other opportunities that parents and teachers want. So anyway, I, I'm, I'm glad to have that voice here, but it is a, you know, all, all high school kids make choices, right? They only have so many hours and they have to make choices about what they want to do for their future. So we hope that every kid that wants access to Avid, we can, we can grant it. And, and we, but that doesn't mean we're not going to monitor it and, and make sure we, we adjust accordingly if we need to down the road.
Okay. Do the board members have any other questions for phase one? Okay. I think we're moving on to phase two for our discussion. So Kathy?
Thank you. Susan, this is a tough time. Everyone is going to be impacted by any decision that we make and I want everyone to know that. I do have some questions. You talked about options for phase two. If you do close buildings, how would you do that? And I have follow-up questions after that answer.
Do you want me to, do you want to take it or?
Go ahead.
Okay. So there will be, if the board says explore, explore and bring us back some sort of proposal around what this would look like to get to a goal of sixteen million dollars, then that work would actually begin tomorrow afternoon. As, and we would be developing a, a set of criteria, for lack of a better term, as far as the number of data points we would look at to bring back a recommendation to the board. Because it isn't as simple as it's this school because it's a hundred years old. I mean, if these were simple financial decisions, I could probably have handed you a list today, right? And said, these are the best financial decisions you could. There are so many more factors when it comes into really any decision with the district beyond finance. Particularly with, as we look at buildings, it makes no sense to close a building that has no other buildings around it to send the kids because then we're just increasing our transportation budget to get them from A to B. So that, that most likely will be some sort of criteria as we're looking at what do we need in, in this phase two budget reduction piece is it's a combination of various factors, the, the age of a building and the physical condition of that building. Because we can have an older building, but it might be in pristine shape with no major repairs, nothing that's, systems have been recently redone. It might actually be in better shape than one that's maybe a few years younger, but it may have a major repair that we've been just avoiding because it's too costly. So that may be push it to a higher ranking on that list. So it will be a number of things and we'll define that criteria for the board. We'll go through each one of those facts. It does need to be transparent. It does need to be fact-driven, data-driven so that it isn't a personal choice of, or there's, we're trying to keep as much emotion out of, out of it as we can, knowing it's an extremely emotional option to explore.
Okay. And to follow up with that, if we should give you guys the authority to explore these buildings, are these, will there be a boundary change if we need to close some buildings?
Yes, most likely there will be some sort of short-term boundary change for a, a school that closes where those kids are going to go.
And will, you might not know this answer yet, but the buildings that might be recommended to close, will they still be a feeder school into a middle or a high school in the area? Or are they gonna, is this gonna be bust across town?
I could take that. I mean, that, that's a good question. And I think that, that's part of what we'll, we'll continue to explore. I think our intention, you know, one, one of the factors that Susan kind of mentioned is ability to implement. So as we're looking at this on a short timeline, right? This is, you know, that's one of the, one of the cons up there is quick implementation. We're going to have to have some, some ability to, you know, actualize the, you know, whatever the decision is. So I, I don't know that we can promise anything or, or answer that completely, but that'll definitely be one of the things we consider. Does that answer your question?
Kind of.
Okay.
I'll just have to keep moving forward in the process.
Right.
To put two and two together. Now, I know people are our greatest asset. People need to be the priority. And I agree with, I do not want to see any jobs cut. I don't want to see anyone lose their job. If I was in a paid position, I would much rather take a small cut than have my job completely eliminated. Having said that, that's not my idea. Okay. It's not my idea. The buildings that will be considered to be closed, these are buildings in operation right now. The staff of these buildings will have the choice to be relocated to another building doing their same job in their same career field, correct?
So there would be an entire HR process that we would deploy should, should all of those decisions kind of happen, where the, the opportunity would exist for those staff to apply and get interviewed for positions of their choice, right? So, I mean, really there's any vacancy that's open, they could go, I, if, if my building is closing and there are, there's a vacancy at Adams and there's a vacancy at Allison. I'm just using whatever alphabetical terms, not even the same grade level, but you know what I'm saying? If those vacancies are available, that, we want the employee to have ownership of, I want to interview for that one and that one. I'm not interested in this one or this one. So we want to give employees that would be impacted that kind of ownership in their own determination of where they would potentially end up. That's, that's the first plan is we want them to be able to look at the opportunities we have and make selections of, yes, I'm interested in that. I want to talk to that principal. I want to talk to that principal. I want to talk to that principal. I don't want to go to that side of town, so I don't want to talk to these people.
So they're going to have to go through the inconvenience of an entire interview process because of something that we decided.
They don't have to. That, that's if they want to make a selection of a building of their choice. Otherwise, we would get to at some point to a placement. If that employee is satisfied with, I don't want to mess with that, just put me somewhere. We can do that.
Okay. And if they're a, an educator that is teaching kindergarten, but the only position that they could go to is fifth grade, is there any kind of consideration with that differentiation?
There's possibilities, but in our current vacancy footprint and the anticipated retirements, that's typically not going to be a problem.
So they could have a lateral move of K to K or?
They could, or K to one or K to two. And, and buildings do that now with retirements and move teachers to where they need them to be already. So that, that occurs within a building every single year.
Right.
Based on, okay, we don't need, we might have three kindergarten sections this year. Next year, our kindergartners coming in are less declining enrollment. So I'm going to take this kindergarten teacher and they're going to be a first grade teacher. Elementary teachers for sure are very accustomed to that.
And what will we do with these empty buildings once we have closed them?
So I think that is work that will have to be an ongoing discussion, right? And I think we want to be very careful of making any sort of hasty decisions because we have that facility's master planning work that's going to be ongoing to say if we end up needing or we go down where we're going to, maybe we end up building new at some point, right? We want a place if that building is not, we don't want to have that open. Maybe we're tearing it down and rebuilding in that spot. You want a place to put kids.
Yes, but that doesn't make sense for our current problem right now. If we're closing buildings because we're of a deficit shortfall right now, why would we even think about if, if we're continuing to decline probably next year and the year after, according to what I heard tonight, we're continuing to go down. So why don't we just sell those buildings? And if that's what we're going to do to, to get that money that we're short of. It doesn't make sense to think about, well, we might go ahead and tear it down, build it. That's more money.
Right, right. It's, remember that's, it's one-time money. A sale of a building is one-time money. That money would go into capital and it could be used for capital needs. Absolutely. And I would think that the majority of the buildings we close over time could, whether it's one year, five years, ten years, the majority of buildings we close, they probably will be a sales action that goes with that. But that's not going to be every building that we, because some of our opportunities will be to combine maybe an older building with another older building and we build another older or a new building for those kids to combine to make a bigger location with services all at that building. There's just so many long-term decisions related to that facility's master planning process. And remember that the state has first right of refusal on any building anyway. So we can decide, yes, we want to, the board can say, yes, let's dispose of five, four, three, two, whatever, whatever number it is. But we don't have final say until the state would come back. So there is. So there is an entire process regarding the sale of a building. And I think the board would want to have a lot of conversation around not only what can we gain short-term, one-time money from a sale, but again, what are our needs going into that facility's master plan? Until you have both pieces of information, I would be wary of making any sort of quick decision on the disposal of buildings until you have the facility's master plan.
I'm sure you've already researched this. How many of our buildings are underused right now? I'm, I'm sure it's in here. I just don't know offhand. Do you know how many are?
Underutilized?
Underutilized.
I mean, if, if you put up the bubble chart, you can see pretty clearly.
They're all underutilized?
Well, hold on. I'll answer your question.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't, I just heard that.
That, that isn't accurate. What they just said isn't accurate. So there's, there's.
Thank you.
We'll pull up the chart and I can explain it to you.
I just, you know, wanted to know, like, if we're talking about closing buildings, is it like all of them right now for the next school year? Or is it going to be over a period of maybe three to five years, we're going to close 10 buildings? Hypothetically speaking.
We, we won't know that till we have that master plan. But if you look at the chart here, that target utilization, all the circles that go up, those are all in the target utilization. So that's, that's not just one building. So what the one building is, is a low FCI score and the right amount of utilization, if that makes sense. So.
So the one in the yellow is underutilized?
No.
No.
It's good.
Appropriately utilized, and it's a, what, in a sense, it's a, a building in good condition.
Okay.
It's meeting kind of both of those check marks as we look at, at kind of that facility condition and we look at enrollment. Again, if you go up, you've got buildings that are getting older and have issues, but they're still pretty full. As you go to the left,
Yes.
You're underutilized. You have surplus capacity in this middle section.
Uh huh.
You are way underutilized in all of these locations. And you have an age problem from about this line up.
But we're not considering getting rid of all those, are we?
This, this is, this is a, this is a Phase One, in this case, Phase Two discussion to address the budgetary problem. The longer-term discussion over the appropriate number of locations and what buildings need to look at. That's all work that will be ongoing.
Okay.
Does that help?
Yeah, it, it does. And if we're still in decline, which has been forecasted, what are we going to do?
So the, I think we, when we, when we talk about declining enrollments and, and we talk about a, a lesser footprint, I don't know that that's inherently in and of itself a negative. If we are adjusting and focusing resources in the right places to educate the students that we have in front of us. I think we continue to offer these exciting opportunities, right? You look at what we've done at the Future Ready Centers. You look at all of these opportunities to, that, to, that we're offering all of our students that are attractive to any student in Kansas, and certainly students in our suburban area. I think the more innovation we can bring, the more we're attractive to potential outside students. But it's hard to be innovative when we're spreading resources out so, so thin.
Well, you've explained it very well. And I want it on the record to be known that I completely trust administration. I trust our superintendent. I know that you're not doing this lightly. There's probably a lot of sleepless nights y'all are going through because of this. I appreciate the blood, sweat, and tears you're putting into this to bring it to us so that we can have this kind of discussion here at the board. Because like I said before, this is going to impact a lot of people. And people as a whole hate change. But more than that, it's the resistance to the change that they seem to get fumbled up on. So I'm, I'm, I welcome any more conversation about this and, and just know that I understand how difficult this is going to be for everybody. Thank you, Susan.
Hazel?
Thank you, Susan. So the bottom line is, do people need to worry about their jobs right now?
And our answer has been pretty consistent. We have positions for every impacted employee, including any that would be impacted by potential school closures. Because of the number, the dollar, that's why the dollar figure we're, we're presenting in Phase Two is a fairly, fairly limited number compared to the hole that we're looking for. Because that's what we think we can absorb the people, right? We, we did not want to go further than that and have this surplus that we would have, again, going back to then having to do something with people where we wouldn't have a job. So that's exactly why we're proposing. What we're proposing is let's focus on what we think we can adjust from a potential building closure standpoint, where those people have positions in other budgeted areas. And we can, we can do that with every, everyone we employ having a job tomorrow, like they do today, or as of July 1st, when we pass a new budget.
And my next question is, you know, I think the thing that most people, it causes, sometimes it causes a panic. And what is the timeline look like that this would happen? That, you know, is it, I mean, is there a timeline that's been established? And we will be very transparent about that trans, that timeline as well.
Yeah, I, I can take that one. Depending on the direction we get tonight. Like Susan said, we, we are ready to, to start work tomorrow. It's a quick timeline or a quick turnaround. I think our intention would be at the next board meeting, which is February 12th, to come to you all with a, with a proposal that gets us the Phase Two number as best we can estimate it. And with, with that action, that would be kind of the start of a process. You know, it ultimately requires your, we, we would have a hearing that we would schedule, and that it requires board action. I think our kind of operational deadline is really spring break. We, we have to know, parents have to know, staff has to know what's going on by spring break so that we can then, you know, use that time after that to get, to get everything taken care of. So. I think we're, did I forget anything?
No.
Is that good?
Okay.
And I have one final question. I've also been hearing talk about a short list of schools. And I have reassured that there is no list that's been established at this time. Is that correct?
Correct. Other than the entire list.
There's no like.
There is one list, and it is the entire list of inventory we have.
Okay, because I think that's a concern. You know, people think that they're on the list of schools that could be closed and.
I do think, if you pull up the bubble chart again, I keep asking to flip around. You know, as a worried staff member, you may look at this and start, you know, if you could figure out what bubble is yours. But just because you're, you're at the top or on the left, doesn't necessarily mean, you know, that your building will close. Just because you're number one, even if, and there is no list. But we have, we have data. We have FCI scores. We have utilization. We, we have some numbers. Enrollment trends, things like that that we'll use. But there's a lot of factors that'll go into any decision that, that we end up with. And that's, that's kind of the objectivity and transparency that Susan talked about, that we want to make sure that we have. But those, even, even criteria, so to speak, I mean, we, we have an idea. We have the data. I mean, since 2018, right? We, we have a, a history of five years, of six years of data that we can, that we can tap into. But we have not ranked the buildings or, I mean, just like Susan said. I mean, it's, you know, we'll, we'll use the best objective measures and then look at operationally, what can we, what can we do to get to the Phase Two number that we'd like to get to?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's fair to say, high schools would not be on the top of any list at this point because there's not enough capacity to close a high school for another high school to take all those. We just don't have that capacity. So, but it's, and, and then again, that's not where the data shows us to look. The data says student loss has occurred in elementary, and you're underutilized heavily in middle. So if we're, if we're, if we're wanting to somehow focus the list of all buildings, high would be on the bottom of any list right now because that, we don't have a solution that solves the, the problems we're trying to solve, which is more than just financial. Again, this isn't just a financial issue. It's, it's then focusing on the elementary and middle pieces.
The, the big purple circles up there are the high schools. And so those are the most utilized, right? You see, you see the, you know, most of them. Now, there's some older buildings too with a high FCI score, but that would be, that would be difficult operationally to absorb those students. So, and we haven't seen enrollment loss at the high schools in the same way, you know, at least over the past, you know, three years. So.
Okay. Thank you, Susan. You always make your presentations understandable to people. Yeah, thank you for your time.
I am going to jump in here. Kelly, you mentioned a BOE proposal. If we, if the board ultimately recommend, accepts your recommendation to move forward tonight to look at these reductions, you're saying the February 12th BOE meeting, there would be a proposal. Could you paint us a better picture of what that would entail?
Well, I, I think we would outline the criteria, the data, and then our, our list of, of recommended buildings. I think, I, I think we almost have to get to that point in order to get to spring break with having decisions. So we want to make sure, you know, staff and parents and everybody in a, in a, in a very, very challenging situation, we want to give as many options as we can to, to parents and staff and everyone involved. So, so yeah, that would be, that would happen at the, at the next board meeting, if that's what you.
Well, Superintendent Bealfield, will you be able, I'm sorry, madam. Can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Will you be able to give us a detailed explanation of why that certain building was chosen? Okay, thanks.
Noc?
Will that visual of utilization and capacity eventually have the names of the schools on them? With the key caveat, of course, that this is not the only two criteria into determining what potential buildings to close. I could imagine like a lot of folks, you know, are wondering like, hey, what bubble? And I, I think like, you know, bare minimum, like we're transparent. They're like, hey, we should probably let folks know, like, what bubble they fall in. So can we make that happen?
Principals have been given this data. Now, we have not put on the website or anything like that, but.
But we're still staff and then the family and students.
Yeah, yeah. The, the other thing I think we're trying to balance is, while being transparent, you know, we've already heard many rumors, right? Like many rumors, even from you all, that have said, hey, this is what I heard. So in the absence of information, you know, people, people fill in the holes. But at the same time, you know, we're, we're trying to, you know, we want to be transparent. We want to, we want to be upfront with everybody. But we also don't want people to draw conclusions that might be dangerous or detrimental to the system too. Like, oh my gosh, just because I'm whatever circle, that means, and then they jump to some conclusion. So.
And that leads to my next point in terms of, apologies for like, for not framing this as a question. More so a suggestion. I mean, I'm keeping in mind like, you know, the, the training. You know, how we make sure that this is a community-defined process for determining, hey, what criteria do we prioritize? Like, because, you know, it shouldn't just be, you know, DLT making the decisions. It's also how do we listen to the boots on the ground? Because again, they have the insights on what's really happening. And so, you know, with these ongoing budget reduction processes, with, you know, how do we define the criteria in determining what schools fall under the criteria? You know, it's how do we, again, like, I'm trying to frame this as a question. Like, how do we make sure that, you know, teachers and classified staff, especially students and family members, they have a proactive say in, in all this? And, and also just, you know, ongoing reports, right? On, hey, these are what we're planning on cutting budget-wise, you know, just educating the community about that. Again, apologies, there's a lot there, but.
Yeah. I do think if, one of the things we're operating off of and a plethora of feedback that we've received is the value of people, right? And so I don't, you know, I, I don't know if this was intended in the, in the comment, but, but it's not as though we haven't engaged community on, on that piece of it. Now, the solution is tricky, right? 42 million. The solution, if, if we're going to value people, how do we, how do we do that? And, and maintain, you know, pieces of pie that are bigger than, than, you know, a bite? That's a challenging question. If I could, I just want to share a story that I think's relevant to, to, I think, to your point. So I got an email before Christmas from a parent who, kid was at a school, elementary school, and it was one of, and I'm making it up a little bit, but situation where there was maybe a fourth-section school, and they had an absence, or they had a vacancy. So there were three teachers that were in the fourth grade or whatever. And there were supposed to be, you know, there was enough students to have a fourth teacher. And they had hired one, and that teacher quit, and then another thing happened. And so they ended up taking the students and spreading them out across the other three classrooms. And then possibly looking at hiring another teacher at semester. And the parents were, you know, frustrated with, with the situation and how it was being handled. And I think as a system, right? I mean, I understand that parent's frustration 100%. Totally valid concerns, that that's, it's not good for a 10-year-old to have multiple teachers in the, in the course of a year, and then have a sub, and have a certified teacher. But as a system, we've chosen to spread all of our staff over all of these buildings in a way that has created some of these inefficiencies. And I think our hope is, with, although it be a difficult decision, if we, if we can take some of those staff and reallocate them in a better way, we have a better chance of every kid in the district having a certified teacher and not having a long-term sub. Our long-term subs are fantastic. We could not survive without our long-term subs. Don't, I, I, a lot of them are retired teachers and do a great, great job. But their subs for a reason, right? A certified teacher and a highly qualified teacher in every classroom is, I think, essential for all of our student outcomes to achieve our goals. So, so part of it is, is looking at, you know, taking it on ourselves and say, we're as a district going to create a system that does a better job, and maybe not be perfect, but a better job at supporting every kid, no matter which zip code they live in, no matter which building they get, they, they're a student at. And we have, we have some schools with, you know, double-digit vacancies year after year, right? I mean, that's, that's a choice we're making as a system because we're spreading teachers out in, in that way. So it's not easy, and it's not perfect. But I do think what we're operating off of is this idea that we want to try to keep counselors, social workers, support staff, behavior specialists. We want to try to keep those positions. So in order to do that, you know, we have to make other decisions. And, and that might be closing buildings. So, yeah.
Julie?
I think I'm hearing that one of our ways that we would be prioritizing people according to the feedback is that in this suggested Phase Two, the one option eliminates staff. And the other option of the building closures allows us to keep all staff. I mean, that's, that's kind of a summary, but is, is that, is that a fair summary?
I think it's a fair characterization of it.
And, and that's, that those staff then are going to have comparable jobs with comparable pay to what they currently have.
I can, I can't speak to that. So I think Susan outlined what we know now as the process. And I, I think if a school closes, all of those staff, if, if they can't find their own home through an interview process or whatever, we would place them, and, and all of what you said is true, on their, on their base rate of pay. Did I say that right? So that doesn't mean necessarily, you know, if they make X number of dollars, you know, because they have a supplemental or something like that, they will continue to make X number of dollars. But their, their base pay, you know, custodian, teacher, counselor, whatever, would be the same in another, in another position, or another building. So is that correct?
The only exception that I think we can anticipate is if someone was, say, working a 260-day calendar, and this wouldn't necessarily be teacher, this might be more of a classified staff, and by choice, they moved to a 230-day calendar. We're going to adjust accordingly, right? Those kind of things could happen. But again, we wouldn't anticipate, again, I'm, right now, there's like 25 custodial openings. So very straightforward process to take custodians at a building and say, well, now we're going to put you at this building. We can move them in an equivalent level. That will work out without too much challenge. Teachers, obviously, particularly at. Teachers, obviously, particularly at a particular grade level or a particular subject, who may want, you know, again, particular school, we're going through that, the HR process to let them kind of dictate how they want to proceed to Kathy's earlier question, that's going to be important. And really classified staff too, same opportunity will exist for them. If they prefer to a, a certain side of town or, you know, something close to their home, then they look at those options first that are available before we would get to a placement. Placement would be either I don't want to deal with it, or they've interviewed and haven't really found that perfect place, then by a certain point, we'll say, okay, well, we've got to place you now in order to kind of plan for the rest of the year.
So, it's still is going to be painful because people are used to working where they work and then they love their peers and, you know, all of this. It's still going to be painful, but there is going to be an element of choice for staff, and they are going to, within that choice, be able to retain their job as opposed to be fired.
Correct.
My only other question is when we're thinking about long-term, our long-term facility plan, do we have enough information so that when the recommendation comes back for these first closures, that those closures will fit into the long-term plan? And what I mean by that is we're not going to now, we're not going to close the school that then when we look at the whole picture, oh, wow, we should have kept that one and done this way instead. I mean, we're, we're far enough into that, to that long-term plan that these decisions can be made.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, yes. And in fact, we've been, we've been working a lot with cooperative strategies, kind of through even just, is this even, is this a possible recommendation? I mean, again, they came in not knowing this. So, we kind of, we kind of threw them a little curveball really to say, eh, we've got it, we've got a little, we've got a little thing we're going to have to deal with on top of what the work you're doing. And so, they've actually been kind of working with us lockstep as we've even explored, is it even, is it possible? What, what can we bring to the board for some, for some discussion? I, I think some of the work that, that they will do next as far as really involving, to your earlier point about the public, that's where that input as far as what, what do we look at for schools? That, that survey information that's going to be coming back will be critical information to the process. It might not be as clean on the short-term decision as it will be on the longer-term information, but it will still be an important factor.
Go ahead. Follow. Question. So, will it just be surveys that operations, you know, consultant will be doing, or will it also be like listening sessions in public forums as well?
Yep, both. So, the, the survey will be launched tomorrow, and we're going to actually do it in postcard mailing to every patron. So, people, everyone who pays taxes will have a voice. But then there'll, there'll also be some in-person focus group, community sessions sort of things too. So.
Good question.
Kathy?
Just a real quick story. Twenty-four years ago, my oldest son went to school. He started kindergarten, and he was science and technology kind, so we took him to Kellogg Elementary. And I don't know if there's anyone that was around at that time. And great school, first grade, you know where I'm going with this, second grade, and I got to notice that Kellogg was going to be closing. That was a building in two-five-nine that was closing. What I like about this time period is that we will be told why. I was never told why. I can only quote, assume. And we went to a wonderful school, McLean Elementary. I think all of our schools are wonderful and can offer it. So, my point is, is that parents and students will survive this, as will the district. So, that's just what I wanted to say.
Hazel?
I just wanted to kind of piggyback on, or go to the opposite side of what Julie was talking about. So, we were talking about not cutting staff. But if we did cut staff to meet our budget, we don't eliminate the deferred maintenance. So, that continues to be a problem, and it's something that just doesn't go away. So, I guess what I'm asking you is, what if we do nothing? What if we?
If you, if, if the board would, would, the challenge of the board is we want to keep all of those ESR initiatives, right? Everything that the, the survey data said we really need, and you're, are not interested in closing buildings. You have, you can, again, look at that cash, use of cash to, to delay hard decisions, but that's all you're doing is delaying, right? And then again, the delay also costs you a couple things, right? The, the use of your, your contingency reserve and other reserves that you have, that's your hedge against other types of enrollment impacts. For example, if the board will recall, not this, this year, but the year before, we had a, an eight-million-dollar adjustment to at-risk to the positive because families that had, there was a law change on the free and reduced meals, where families that had qualified for Medicaid were directly certified for free meals. And so, we got a nice bump in at-risk that year because all of those families who either wouldn't have filled out a free lunch form or whatever, didn't have to, we got the, the benefit of all those additional free lunch kits. And that eight million dollars was embedded. This year, twenty-three, twenty-four, they, that, that COVID Medicaid dropped off. However, because there's a thirty-day carryover window, if they qualified for free lunch in twenty-two, twenty-three, we got them again for twenty-three, twenty-four, regardless if they filled out a new form or not. Because, well, if they filled out a new form, we'd have them. But if they didn't fill out a form, we got the carryover. So, we don't really know in twenty-four, twenty-five, what at-risk looks like. Some of that cash, you want to hedge a potential of a loss of at-risk of some number. We don't know what that is. Two, as of July first of this year, we'll, all districts in Kansas will be faced with an open enrollment change. We don't know what the impact will be of that. We might gain, we could lose. We, we don't have any sort of trend data to forecast what that looks like. So, those are some unknowns related to the budget where it's good to have cash reserves to address those kind of issues. So, we're not trying to cut in anticipation of what could happen. We don't know what could happen. But if you spend all your cash reserves down in that year, you've got nothing left to adjust for those kind of happenings. So, we, we financially would highly recommend you not doing nothing. You need to look at a combination of things to try to minimize all the impacts through the systems that you can, but you're going to have some impact somewhere because of the, the size of the, the dollar figure we're talking about.
And I, I want to throw in one other kind of off of that, but similar. There's some current legislation that they're talking about in Topeka, like now, about the count date and current, counting current enrollment students versus last year's students or two years ago. The, some of the, the districts with increasing enrollment would like to count current year students because you get money for kids that you have. Some of the legislatures are, you know, the, the thinking is we shouldn't be paying you money for kids you don't have anymore. The challenge for us would be a decision being made for next year, right? All of our conversations tonight are planning for next year's budget. If they make a change to next year's budget now, that, that is extremely difficult for us. So, there, they could definitely, they could easily solve this and say, next year, you can count current year, one-year look back, two-year look back. And then the following year, if they want it to be current year and one-year look back, we could plan for that. But if they change it mid-course, that would really be challenging for us. And that's why we always put that asterisk of what if Topeka blank, right? What if they do, right? What if they do something that's going to really, really change things for us? So, we're, we've written testimony on this, just engaging you all in that conversation. It's not that it's an illogical premise. It's just that if they, if they operational, if they make that operational next year, based on all the planning we've already been doing, that, that creates huge challenges. So, we're not totally against it, just not against it for next year, if that's possible. So, did you want to chime in on that?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Melody?
Thank you. So, I'm looking at communication, and I'm looking at an opportunity to, this aligns with what some of, some of what Noc was speaking to. How, how to incorporate and how to bring along our communities, the public, which I also hear you saying. And so, I'm look, I'm, I'm also thinking about the role of our unions, our teacher unions, our SEICU.
SEIU?
I'm looking at that. And, and then I'm looking at all of the neighborhood associations, all of our civic groups that are out there. So, I, I heard you say, when I'm, when you're talking about surveys and focus groups, I, I tend to see the same individuals in those focus groups. So, I, I really am hopeful that we can stretch outside of the typical, of our normal, and really get into our community. And to, and, and to be able to inform them on a, on a routine basis. I don't know what that looks like. I don't know if that's a portal that they can go to. I don't know who would access that. So, doing it on multiple levels, where we have the focus groups, where we have our unions that are working with us, where we have our civic groups and our neighborhood associations and who, our churches, I left the churches out. So, that we are truly bringing our public along as we make these decisions, not, not just as input for making the decision, but keeping them informed as these decisions are being made. Because not everyone is watching this right now, and certainly not everyone is going to go to YouTube and look at it later. So, I, I'm just, I'm putting this out there because I really would like to see us inform and communicate with our public differently, very innovatively. Because I, I see this as opportunity, not just a, not just a negative, not, not simply the cons and change is very difficult for all of us. But bringing a public along with it, infusing into the decision-making, you know, their real-time comments, as well as, you know, some that we've kind of, you know, found, not found, but have had other groups and surveys and be able to, you know, glean from that. But really, bringing our public along with us. I'm hopeful that we're able to, to do something differently this time. I don't know exactly what it looks like, but that's what I think real communication is. And that's when a public is not blindsided and that they really feel some ownership in how we're going, how we are going to do this, and it's not done to them.
Thank you, Melody. Kelly, could you give us a summary again of the timeline? So, you mentioned what's going on at the February board meeting. Can you kind of play this out through the summer and the start of next school year?
Sure. For the building closure option?
Yes. Kind of what, what can the public expect? What can people watching this expect? What, what are people who are afraid their building's going to be closed? What, kind of give us a broad-brush picture of what that's going to look like?
Okay. And, and this is, to the best of our knowledge, I mean, I, I do think the spring break, you know, deadline, so to speak, is, is pretty firm. I think it's going to be really hard to do anything much after that.
So, people will know what buildings are being closed by spring break?
Yeah, yeah. We, we would bring a recommendation back next board meeting with the names of the buildings and like Kathy said, the why, you know, our criteria and all of that. We would then have a period of, or an opportunity, we, one of the requirements of us for our board policy is to have a hearing. So, we'd have an opportunity for, for public to make comment. We'd probably, kind of to Melody's point, probably have a, an opportunity for written, you know, testimony, so to speak. I don't think we'd read it to the record, but we may have an option for, for written testimony if people can't come to a hearing. Listen to that feedback as a board and then, you know, vote ultimately on a decision. And then after that, and, and this part's not necessarily well thought out because we haven't got to that point yet. But after that, we're looking at, so now what, right? I'm a parent, you know, I'm Kathy Bond, twenty-four years ago, and Kellogg Elementary closed, what are my options? What about magnet? What about boundaries? All of that kind of thing. So, we would work in an individual basis at the school level to help navigate those things and communicate with, with that impacted community. These changes would be for August of twenty-four, right? Just to make sure we're clear on what we're talking about. That, the, that's why the timeline is so tight and the quick implementation is so important. Ideally, we would have more time, but it is what it is, and we're, we're here. So, sometime between, you know, March and, and May, we would, and, and right now, I'm focused on mainly the parent part of this. You know, we would work with parents and families as far as where students might, might go and what options they'd have. The timeline would be similar for staff, where we would, if, if we know, we can, we can have a plan that's approved by the board that gets us to the Phase Two goal, then we can open up other positions in other buildings that, you know, to fill other spots, and staff can start, you know, interviewing for getting placed in those positions too across the district. So, we definitely want the message for staff to be, we need you, we want you, we want you to stay here. We're the best place to work. So, this isn't ideal, right? We ask principals and staff to create a culture, right? That's what we ask them to do. That's what Restore Practice is all about, create a sense of belonging. And so, to undo that is extremely challenging. But we're, we're going to work with all of our buildings to create that sense of belonging for any new staff who come in and any new parents who come in and new, new students who come in. It's part of, it, it's an opportunity to really live that work across the district and create that sense of belonging. So, then, you know, there would be transition work, you know, I, you know, in conversations with Katie, we've brainstormed about, you know, the things to consider if we have to do something like this, even, even when we have to move teachers at, in, in August, which we, we do sometimes, kind of a last minute, oop, the enrollment came up here, went down here, we've got to move a teacher. What are ways we can make that a better process for the teacher? It's not ideal. Packing up a classroom is a nightmare. Setting up a classroom is a lot of work. So, how can we make that better in a non-ideal situation? What are the things that we might consider just to, to make that a smoother process? So, we're, we're taking all of that into consideration too. So, I think that, is there anything I missed, Susan, as far as timeline?
No. I, I think the February 12th, and then with a, with a March 4th, I think is somewhat what we're looking at for potential public. I mean, those steps would all occur fairly quickly in order to make, by spring break deadline, right? As far as to make final decisions.
And can you speak to our engagement strategies and communication? Because you said there is going to be a public outreach, there's going to be a survey, there's going to be community listening events. So, how are we going to communicate that exactly to our public?
Yeah. So, I'll pass this down. This was supposed to be part of my superintendent report, but I'll skip to it now because it's relevant. So, this is the, the postcard that's going to go out to every person who lives in the district as part of the, the survey's being conducted by Cooperative Strategies, but we've had input with them as far as the building of the survey and what's going to be part of it. Scan the QR code, you know, take the survey. It should take less than five or 10 minutes-ish, somewhere in that neck of the woods. And we'll also send this out to parents. We'll do just kind of an overall engagement. This is stage one. And then in February, we'll have some of the community meetings that Melody was talking about. We've talked about going out into communities, going out into areas to, to engage and listen. This is, you know, two different tracks. We have the short-term track that we're trying to sell for next year, and then a longer-term master plan that we hope is a five-to-ten-year plan with a big vision that's, that's bold and exciting and, and able to be something that a community can really rally around. So, this feedback will be primarily for the longer-term plan, but it all, it all ties in together and all be used as we, as we move forward. So, so that's engagement. And I love, I love the idea of continued engagement. So, I think that's something we can talk about. And then communication, we will, you know, I've, I've heard too, you know, we need to, we're trying to be as transparent as we can. We're trying to share information as we can. But we will have a place on the website that should be there tomorrow morning-ish, maybe afternoon, that'll have Susan's fantastic presentation tonight. morning-ish, maybe afternoon, um, that'll have Susan's fantastic presentation tonight. Um, it'll have the feedback that we've received from, um, the, the listening circles that we did with site councils and parents and with staff. Um, and it'll have some of the phase one, uh, bullets that we've talked about so far. And that will be the go-to for anyone wanting to know, um, what is the accurate information, right? What's the, what are the things that have been decided? That'll be where that lives. Um, that way we don't need to wonder, is this true, is that true? Um, if it's, if it's there, it's true. And if it's, uh, the website, so it'll be under our budget tab on the website, so, um, so that will be tomorrow. Anything else? I think I covered it all.
No, it's, it's, and there's the, the budget banners at the bottom. So anyone that's interested in budget information, there's right on the front page, there's a budget banner at the very bottom. And then once you click on it, there'll be 24, 25 budget work. You can click right on that and all of the information will be there. And every, and every meeting we have subsequent, I'm hoping more and more, right? More and more and more as, as more and information becomes available and clearer a- as decisions get made.
So our website is usd259.org.
Slash finance.
And they can find all of that information there. So they've, so now we've got a parent that's watched the budget meeting, that's looked at the budget stuff, has clicked around on the website and they still have questions. Um, what would they do with those questions and where would they go?
Well, I believe, I don't know if this will be there, but the info@usd259.net is the, kind of the general question, click that, type in an email, um, and whoever the person that has the information to answer the question will respond. So, um, that could be at communications, it could be as finance, it could be in HR, it could be something else. But, um, that's kind of our go-to place for, for asking questions.
Okay. Very good. Hazel? Oh. Are there any other questions or comments from the board?
This is more so longer-term, so phase three and beyond. Uh, what would your thoughts be on an independent, at the same time, community-driven evaluation of all the various programs, services, products we have with regards to student outcomes and with regards to this idea of, you know, we want to keep the best staff? We want to create a sense of belonging and a, and a sense of safety for all, so.
We're certainly not opposed to anyone coming in and looking at our data and, and offering. I mean, that's essentially what Cooperative Strategies has been doing for us related to facilities, so we're not opposed to, to that. It just, obviously, it's some one-time money that we would need to spend to, to obtain the independent review. Usually that's a consultant and experience would show that's a $300,000 to $600,000 activity to get that kind of in-depth review that you're talking about. Um, it's possible. I don't know that in the timeline that we're talking about for these kind of decisions, but certainly longer term.
Yeah. I, I definitely welcome it. I, I think it's probably worth, when, when we get to that point, if, if that's something that, that the board directs us to do, having a board discussion about, um, you know, making decisions based on what we hear, right? Like it's, I, I think that would be, uh, you know, we want to, if, if we're going to invest in that money, we want to then make what might be hard decisions, again, um, saying we're doing more of this and less of that, that, that can be hard. Um, so just making sure we're all on board for, yes, we believe that that's a good thing to do and we're going to use the data to make decisions. So knowing you all the way I do and, and our conversations we have, I think all seven would support that, but, but I think it's a good conversation, you know, to make sure that we're, that we're all on, on the same page with, but I would welcome it too.
Melody?
Just for clarification, on February the 12th, the information that we'll be receiving will not necess- for both, um, will not necessarily be, um, program-related or, because I'm, I'm listening to what Noc was just saying about, uh, being able to do evaluations, um, programming so that we, you know, can tie outcomes to actual, um, you know, sustainability of a, of a, of a particular program. What we're going to receive is, is not solely tied to facilities, or is it on, uh, February the 12th?
Yes, it will be solely tied to facilities.
And so coming up on the, when we talked about, uh, doing a benefit analysis, what was that tied to? What programming is that tied, or is it tied to?
Well, I, I think that was the phase three. I mean, I think that was what you were getting at, phase three and beyond. If there was other decisions that we needed to make this year, as far as reductions go, that, that, that's where that comes into play. But, but the phase two is, is only.
Is solely facilities.
Yes.
It has nothing, because for whatever reason, yeah, I had another, another idea about what information we were going to be getting. So therefore glad that I was able to clarify. And yeah, definitely look forward to being able to do a cost-benefit analysis for all the programming. But this does dovetail into what Dr. Polite is going to be working on and that is looking at, um, particular programs that we are doing within our, uh, organization and what their benefits are, uh, and as to whether or not if we need to keep them. So, yeah.
Yeah.
And I know he's not sitting here now, he's in the audience, so.
I do think, just, just to provide some context too, with kind of what it is, um, you know, let's say we wanted to evaluate software. We have, you know, 50 software programs that we currently have, um, just spent out of '08, and I could do the others too, but, I mean, it's upwards of 80 software programs. So the idea of like digging into this and doing a cost-benefit analysis and really getting into the weeds of this, I think Susan and I are like, yes, let's do it. But the bandwidth to, to achieve that i- is, especially with all the other things we're, uh, we're doing now, um, it, it would be a big hill to climb, right? So I think it's, it's easy to think, oh yeah, we can, we can, you know, turn and evaluate programs like on a dime, but there is a lot of nuance and a lot of complexity to it. I love the idea for sure. I, I'm not trying to knock the idea, but I just want to make sure we level set a little bit on how, how quickly we can, we can make a change, you know, make recommendations in that area. So I think programming-wise though, you're talking almost more mentoring or community organizations and that, is that fair?
Absolutely, I'm specifically talking about, um, mentoring programs.
Okay.
Community organizations that are in our buildings and, um, some of us really are not clear on their benefit.
Yeah, for sure, yeah, and we can, we can do that.
And, and we're very clear on the benefits of others, so.
Thank you. So wrapping this discussion up, we want to recognize that change is hard and the unknown creates anxiety. Um, disruptions are stable, destabilizing and we recognize that. So these are hard decisions that are not being made lightly. There are no perfect solutions, there's really only trade-offs. And we're going to place our priority on our people first and foremost. So just kind of wrapping up some things that, um, have been discussed tonight, just in a, a quick summary, is we're going to honor the feedback that we've heard from the site councils and staff. We desire to do what is best for students. We desire for equitable and transparent decision-making. The decisions will be fair and equitable based on data using, but not limited, limited to the FCI scores, the building needs, the demographic studies, the strategic plan and other relevant impacts. We have a commitment to preserve classroom supports for high-need students, which are really people supports. We are open to creative solutions, but understand that there will be changes. And we will once again put our priorities on people over places. So staff has given a recommendation to the board. And are there any board members that object to the district's recommendations? Okay. I see no objections. Um, so I, I see that there's a consensus for the board for staff to go ahead and move forward with this work.
We will commence.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Patrick, next item?
Next item, under policy, second review, proposed updates of Bowie policies.
This is a second review, so we will take a vote on these items. Are there any questions about any of the policies listed? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the six policies written out?
I'll make a motion.
Motion's moved by Kathy, seconded by Melody. Motion passes 6-0. Patrick, next item?
Next item, first review, proposed updates to drone policy.
This is a first review, so no action will be taken. Are there any questions on this listed policy? Okay, seeing none. We will, this will come up at the February board meeting and we will vote on it then. Patrick, next item?
Next item, under reports, United Teachers of Wichita.
Welcome, Katie, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. Good evening, President Reeser, Vice President Albert, distinguished school board members and Superintendent Beilefeld. Um, first, I just wanted to extend my heartfelt congratulations and warmest welcome to our newly-appointed board members, um, Noc Bong and Melody McCray Miller. And then congratulations to, um, returning member Stan Reeser. Your commitment to serving our community is truly commendable. Um, it is School Board Appreciation Month, so we also want to express our deepest gratitude to each member of the board for your tireless volunteer work. Your efforts shape the future of education in Wichita and we're blessed to have such passionate and devoted board members. In the face of numerous challenges, we're happy to report that according to our recent UTW survey, 83.4% of our certified staff members agreed that Wichita Public Schools is a good place to work. This positive response is a testament to the collective efforts of everyone involved in creating a nurturing and supporting environment for our educators. But it's crucial to acknowledge the concerns raised by our teachers regarding planning time provided to them each week. The survey revealed that 74.8% of our certified staff disagreed with the statement that the amount of planning time that they have is sufficient. This highlights a critical area where we, as a school district, must address the needs of our dedicated educators. Every month, I stand before this board advocating for our hard-working educators and urging for additional time to be allotted for their essential tasks. In August, I requested an additional 72 minutes for staff to complete their annual sign-off activities. And in December, I appealed for two hours of team planning during the January in-service. These requests are not made lightly, but stem from a genuine concern for the well-being of our teachers and the quality of education we provide our students. As we move forward, we implore that the board and superintendent consider the invaluable role that increased planning time plays in fostering a positive and effective learning environment. Providing our teachers with the necessary time and resources is an investment in success of our students and the continued excellence of Wichita Public Schools. In addition to celebrating the achievements and expressing our concerns, it's crucial that we address this financial landscape lies ahead for USD 259 in the upcoming school year. We are aware of budget concerns looming on the horizon, particularly with the impending loss of Essar funds at the end of the school year. I would like to note that if the state had met, met its statutory obligation, over the last five years, our school district would have received an additional 60 to 70 million dollars in special education funding during that period. Instead, we find ourselves in an unfortunate position of having to pull from the gen- from general funds. Um, I do see this as an opportunity to rally our community and call upon them to engage with their legislators in Topeka. We must remind our representatives of their obligation to fully fund special education. It's not just a financial necessity, but it's a moral obligation to ensure that every student, regardless of their needs, receives a quality education that they deserve. Due to all of the, um, financial strain that Mrs. Willis mentioned earlier, we are now faced with the difficult decision of closing neighborhood schools to tackle the budget challenges and preserve teach- staff jobs. This is a situation that none of us wish to be in and the repercussions of such closures will undoubtedly be felt by our students and educa- dedicated educators. The impact extends beyond the buildings themselves and it reaches into the heart of our community. As you navigate through these tough budget decisions, we urge the board to prioritize keeping these cuts as far away from the classrooms as possible. The welfare of our students and the strength of our education system depend on it. Furthermore, it's essential that we exercise prudence in filling open positions, ensuring that our current educators are notified early and given first priority for open positions and that there's a well-thought-out plan in place for our educators who will, may need to transfer locations. In the unfortunate event of having to close buildings, our staff must be provided with adequate time, resources and support to facilitate a smooth transition. We owe it to them and to our students to handle these challenges with compassion, foresight and a commitment to preserving the integrity of our educational system. Thank you for your time and thank you again for everything you do.
Thank you, Katie. Patrick, next item?
Next item, under reports, service employees international.
I do not see a representative from SEIU, so, next item?
Next item, under reports, superintendent's report.
All right, uh, I'm going to keep mine pretty brief. Um, got three things. Uh, Wednesday night, we have the, uh, choices and opportunities showcase at Century Two for all of our, uh, parents to learn more about the district and magnet opportunities. Uh, it's from 5:00 to 7:30 on Wednesday, January 24th. Patrick, right now, is passing out some, uh, board, uh, since it's board, uh, recognition month, um, some recognitions for you guys. And these come from our students because I think, um, as we all know, uh, that's what we're here for. And that's, uh, I could have written you a note, but these are way cuter and way, way better than anything I could have done. So, um, please enjoy these notes from some of our elementary kiddos, uh, that recognize you for your hard work and everything that you do. Um, and last but not least, I wanted to just, uh, lift up, you know, we've had a, a challenging January so far with weather, uh, even this morning, um, slick curbs and parking lots and everything else. Um, we just appreciate everyone's patience and understanding, um, as weather that might hit at 6:30 AM or 8:00 AM is challenging for us to navigate. And we, we use data to make decisions, we make the best decisions we can at the time. Um, and, uh, not always does the forecast cooperate with our decisions. So, uh, we, we, uh, try to do the best we can and appreciate everyone's grace and patience as we navigate those. So, um, I, I live with six students who attend school in the district and I definitely hear from them before I hear from anyone else about my decisions, so, or our decisions because it's not my decision, so, um, anyway, uh, I'll cut it off there. Um, and again, truly thank you for serving, thank you for doing what you do for our kids and hopefully you can enjoy, uh, a few, uh, fun little cards from the kids.
That's awesome, thank you. Patrick, next item?
Next item, under reports, Board of Education reports.
Kathy, you want to start us off?
I received a press release and I want to read parts of it to the board and to the community. It regards Prime Fit. Prime Fit is, um, a foundation that is youth-serving and they are in our schools with, uh, Tion Wilson and Dr. Kimberly Wilson. They are set to embark on a mission to Capitol Hill tomorrow and they're going to be advocating the cause of Kansas youth and families, advocating for mentoring and sharing the organization's impactful miss- miss- mission, excuse me. Tion and Kimberly, they'll represent this organization on the national stage during Capitol Hill Day. The advocacy efforts aim to shed light on their critical issues faced by marginalized youth, emphasizing the transformative power of mentoring in the lives of young individuals facing social, emotional, academic and behavioral health risks. I wanted to give a shout-out to Prime Fit, um, and tell them that we're very proud of them and if, if the new board members, if you have not yet met Tion or Kim, I encourage you to meet them and, um, shadow them, uh, when they go visit the schools and you will see the, um, amazing relationships that, uh, Tion and his team have, uh, developed with the students of 259. So that's. So that's the first thing. The second thing I'd like to share is I spoke with Project Teacher today, not today, last week. I have, I have a meeting with them at the end of the month. And I don't know if everyone knows about what Project Teacher is. And I found out that the person that spearheads it, Terry Johnson, was actually my children's youth pastor. So that's kind of cool. So it's, it's an organization that helps our teachers with supplies. And the teachers don't even need to go rec-, get those. They get them. Terry brings it to the teacher. So if teachers don't know about this, I really encourage you to call them if you need supplies. The next thing I want to talk about is I did attend Battle of the Books. It was my very first time this morning. I'm impressed with not only the students, but our team here at 259. These guys, we could do a newscast, you know? I mean, we could do everything. So kudos to administration for what they've done. Last thing is Pando, who I sit on the board as an ex-officio. Their, their director is resigning, and so they're going to be having their next meeting on February the 8th to have their strategic plan created. And Pando is an organization that also is nonprofit in the community that helps our students, not only in 259, but also in Derby, and they have extended it to Mays also. That's all I have. Thank you.
For my board report tonight, it's timely. As a good follow-up to Superintendent Beilefeld's blog last Friday about the crucial role, role of school facilities in education. So if you haven't seen that yet, you need to check that out. But I want to acknowledge tonight, as our district has been experiencing very extreme weather conditions, the crucial work of our facilities personnel that they do during these times in order to keep our district available for great learning opportunities for kids. And I've got a list of nine of them, so hang on here. During these times of extreme temperatures and weather conditions, first, many employees spend extended hours in blizzard conditions to remove snow from parking lots and sidewalks so that students and staff can get to work into school. Secondly, we call on the skills and dedication of HVAC technicians who keep the buildings heated in conditions that tax the equipment and the equipment capacities. Thirdly, our buildings require 24/7 monitoring on the part of electricians to ensure extreme conditions doesn't impact supply of power, and then they immediately address the outages when they occur. Fourth, roofers monitor and repair leaks after snowfall and ice melts. Plumbers monitor and repair water lines to ensure there are no leaks from frozen pipes. Building engineers and grounds maintenance personnel at high schools manage multiple tasks of climate control, electricity monitoring, and snow removal. Garage mechanics keep equipment and vehicles operational under extreme conditions, especially with the gelling of diesel fuel. Custodians monitor buildings for leaks and track in wet hallways and provide ice melt and shovel sidewalks to ensure safety at school. And SSC leaders keep all of the activities going and operating efficiently. So a huge thank you to all of these for your ongoing work on behalf of our district. And, but an extra shout-out to you during this, these extreme weather conditions that make your important jobs even more difficult.
Thank you for that, Julie. I do want to say, well, I'm glad someone reads the blog, so that's good. That was actually Luke Newman who wrote that. He was my guest blogger for the week, so he did a great job with that article. So I wanted to give him credit.
And I did see it, and I did read it, and it was great. So everybody, go read Superintendent's blog.
Go read it, yeah.
Hazel?
I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate the newly-elected members of our board, Mr. Noc Bong and Ms. Melody McCray-Miller. And sincerely, I'd like to welcome you to the WPS Board. Effective school board governance is crucial to the success of our district. And I look forward to collaborating with you to continue to make good decisions to support our students, their families, and their, and our staff. And I would just like to say thank, welcome to the team. And, and I'd like to congratulate Mr. Stan Reeser for his continuance on the board.
I don't have a board report. I just want to say thank you. It's a pleasure to join the board. I'm looking forward to doing good things for all of our students and teachers and administrators and support staff. They are most important.
They are extremely important. Thank you. I do want to say welcome to our fellow board members. It, it's a great honor to serve in this district, so it's going to be an honor to serve with you as well. I've spent some time getting to know you guys, getting to know some other leaders within the Wichita community area. And so it's a great honor to serve together. And just want to say welcome and congratulations. And Stan, it's good to serve, continue to serve with you. So that is going to be all for my report.
And the only report I have is I look forward to turning these challenges into opportunities. I think the, the big picture here is what does this Wichita school board want this school district to look like in two to five years? And that's going to be the big challenge before us. And I look forward to working with each of you on that.
Noc?
If you have any questions, comments, concerns, suggestions, please, please, please reach out to me or anyone of, one of us. I remind myself that at the end of the day, I'm here to work for you. It's not the other way around. So again, if there was anything that we did not discuss during today's meeting that you felt should have been addressed, please reach out.
Thank you. Patrick, next item?
Next item, under Miscellaneous, New Business.
Is there any business that anybody needs to bring up? Seeing none. Patrick, next item?
Next item, under Miscellaneous, Board of Education Requests.
Does anyone have any requests to be made? Seeing none. Patrick, next item?
Next item, Adjournment.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Motion made by Kathy, seconded by Melody. Motion passes 7-0. Meeting is adjourned.